Let's move on to the next item on our agenda, our return to school plan. Dr. Swift?
Mr. Combs, will you introduce Ms. Langford? It's the school day-to-day student side, right?
Ms. Langford, who is the executive director of Women's Resources and most days my boss. She's here to talk about the return to school plan. Return to school plan is part of the governor's teams order issued June 30. As Dr. Swift mentioned earlier, we have to submit to the WISD by August 15th. And they have to submit it to the state by August 17th. And it deals with four areas: safety protocols, instruction, emotional and social emotional support, and and
Operations.
Operations. I always forget the fourth one. So Ms. Langford's here to talk briefly and highlight some of the return to school safety plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Swift, and the Ann Arbor Public Schools community. I am here, as Mr. Combs had just stated, to talk about the COVID-19 return to schools plan. This plan complements the COVID-19 plan, the preparedness and response plan that Mr. Combs had just spoke of. And together, we want to make sure we're ensuring the highest level of health and safety for all students and staff. So we can go to my first slide. All right, just as an overview of this plan, the return to school plan focuses on students' return to school for the 2021 school year. The plan is required by the governor's executive order, and it incorporates protocols from the Michigan return to school roadmap, as well as the requirements from the executive order. So AAPS must follow guidelines to ensure compliance, depending on what region and what phase we're currently in, as outlined by the Michigan Safe Start Plan. So Washtenaw County, therefore Ann Arbor Public Schools, is actually Region 1, which I'm sure most of you are aware. And we're in Phase 4. As I go through my future slides, we'll talk a little bit more about the phases so that we can dig deeper into that. The executive order also requires that we incorporate the Michigan return to school roadmap. If you recall, the governor put together a task form on education and the return to school advisory council. This task form was put together to come up with this roadmap, which is about 65 pages. I think most of you have probably seen it. Within this group, there were school administrators, there were teachers, board members, students, local government officials, mental health professionals, and other stakeholders. So I believe Ms. Bacalaur used this slide in a previous presentation that she did. This is from the Michigan Safe Start Plan. As you can see, this slide illustrates the six stages. Underneath each phase, or I'm sorry, the six phases. Underneath each phase, there's the criteria of what's happening during that phase. There is what's best for us? Do we need to stay at home? You know, how do we best stay safe? And then there are also just ways in which the status of where the disease is. So at the top, under Phase 1, you see we're at uncontrolled growth. In Phase 2, there's a persistent spread. In Phase 3, there's flattening. In Phase 4, we're improving. In Stage 5, we're containing. And in Stage 6, we are post-pandemic. And we can't wait to get there. So the COVID-19 return to school plan, as Mr. Combs had just stated, has four main categories: safety, mental and social emotional well-being, instruction, and operations. The AAPS plan is set up similarly to that, by phase and then by category. The AAPS Reimagined Learning Plan 2021 is cited for additional information in the area of mental and social emotional well-being and instruction sections of each phase. So let's talk a little bit about the phases and the requirements, and what Ann Arbor Public Schools will have in place under each phase. So in Phase 1 through 3, in accordance with the roadmap, Ann Arbor Public Schools will suspend in-person instruction and offer alternative modes of instruction. We'll suspend athletics, after-school activities, et cetera. And for the most part, school buildings will be closed. The only staff that will be able to go into school buildings are those who need to conduct necessary business. Of course, the food service workers, as they prepare for food distribution. And then licensed childcare providers, if the district is going to provide childcare during this time. So Phase 4, and again, Phase 4 is the current state of our region. Our Region 1 is in Phase 4. So the roadmap states that although permitted, in-person instruction is not required and is left to the discretion of the local school district. So under Phase 4, if we were to return to in-person instruction, we would have the following safety procedures in place. And I know Mr. Combs has gone through this a little bit. But we would require face coverings for students and staff in hallways, restrooms, classrooms, and other common areas, transportation as well. There will be limited exceptions. Students in grades K through 5 will not have to wear a face covering in the classroom if they are to remain in the classroom throughout the school day and do not come into close contact with other students. Students in 6th through 12th, as we've stated previously, will be required to wear face coverings at all times. Will require social distancing to the maximum extent feasible. Will require self-screening for staff. Will consult with Washtenaw County Health Department regarding self-screening for the students. And then we'll conduct frequent cleaning and disinfecting of high-touch surfaces. So Phase 5, you will notice, is almost identical to Phase 4. The only difference here is that in Phase 5, under the governor's roadmap, or under the roadmap, we have to provide in-person instruction. All the other criteria will remain the same. We're still going to do the same thing with the face coverings. We're going to require social distancing. We'll have the self-screening for staff, consult with Washtenaw County regarding self-screening for students, and continue to conduct frequent cleaning and disinfecting. So Phase 6, we're all shouting hallelujah because we're happy we're post-pandemic. And this phase will begin providing instruction in person. We'll continue to support healthy hygiene behaviors and to teach hand washing. And we'll contact and work with the local health government or health department if there are any further diagnosed cases of COVID-19. So the plan's approval. So as Dave stated at the beginning of his presentation, the AAPS return to school plan, which is the brief summary that I've just gone through with you, and I know you have the detailed document there with you, incorporates all the required, strongly recommended, and recommended protocols from the Michigan return to school roadmap. To the extent appropriate and feasible, given potential limitations of space, resources, and other conditions, we will make sure that all of these recommendations are incorporated. The plan must be approved by you, the school board, by August 15th of 2020. And then the ISD must submit this plan, along with any other constituent districts in the ISD, by August 17th to the superintendent of public instruction and the state treasurer. So in conclusion, just to again go over the differences in the two plans, the plan that Mr. Combs had just presented, the AAPS COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan and Policy, will govern the responsibility of employees, contractors, and visitors when on district property. The plan that I just presented, the AAPS return to school plan, focuses on the students and their return to school for the 2021 school year. In addition to this plan being required by the governor's executive order, it further emphasizes the district's top priority, which is the health and safety of all students and all staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langford. Trustees, do you have any questions? Trustee Nelson?
Thank you. When we hear in an executive order a certain limitation on the number of people who can be together in an inside space, I should have thought of this a long time ago, but happened not to until your good presentation. Does that rule apply to schools? Or, and if so, how? Or is there a separate set of regulations that applies to school? For example, if I hear the number of people who may gather together inside cannot be more than 25, do we have to follow that in the school or are we in a separate regulation?
Thank you, trustee Nelson. I'll probably bring in Emile here in a minute to maybe discuss this. But under the current plan, what's recommended is that social distancing is observed. It's not a requirement. However, as I stated before, we plan on attacking or administering and having every requirement for social distancing. But again, it's going to be within limitations of what we can do. So if there are, you know, more than, you know, 30 kids in a classroom, it's going to be pretty hard to social distance. So there's not a specific number as associated with, as you stated, a number of group of people that can be together within the school roadmap. But again, it would be difficult to probably try to social distance if we have school face-to-face and in session. But I'll have Emile speak to that.
I'm going to jump in there before Mr. Lautzana, if that's all right. Trustee Nelson, I really appreciate you raising this question. And I'll share with you, it's been one of the fundamental disconnects for so many of us throughout this process, is that school is a gathering. A classroom is a convening. And so there is a disconnect between the number of people who are allowed to gather and what we do in school. So apart from these excellent plans that our professionals have put together, I just want to put an exclamation point after your point, which is how do those two things interact? And they don't very well, in my opinion. Dave, you want to get me out of trouble if I just got in it?
You're good.
Go ahead, Mr. Lautzana.
I would just add, you know, we hear about factories reopening and other businesses reopening. And people often don't realize, or maybe it just never occurred to them, schools have one of the highest densities of people per square feet of just about any other building type out there, short of places like movie theaters and sports arenas, obviously have higher density, but airports. But for most businesses and commercial operation, schools have a very high level of density, people per square feet. And so creating social distance in a school building is more challenging than a factory setting, for instance, where you have lots of machines spread out all over the place and people are relatively dispersed in the environment. So there are various sources we've been looking at. And I know we'll have a future presentation on, you know, reoccupancy as we enter the hybrid mode and we start to bring limited number of people back into the buildings. But there's a lot of good guidance from the American Institute of Architects and other professional organizations about how to maximize social distancing in classroom environments and other school environments in a way that you're able to maintain social distance and understand what your socially-distanced occupancy in a school building is, which is nowhere near 100% occupancy.
If I may follow up to see if I understand our situation. When I read a limit to a gathering in the governor's executive order, I should more or less assume it doesn't matter to school policy. Everyone's ignoring it. But on another tier, that when I hear something about the six-foot distancing requirement, that it isn't completely ignored. We're supposed to try to follow it. But if we can't, it's not a... We aren't breaking any rule. We just have to try.
That's correct, trustee Nelson.
Once I lay this out, it sort of seems kind of sobering that how we're dealing with gatherings of people for purposes of education. And it appears to be much less demanding and stringent than gathering of people for a family reunion or something else. Is that a fair appraisal?
I would agree, trustee Nelson, with exactly what you said. The gathering, obviously, if schools are able to open up face-to-face, there are going to be more than the recommended number of people gathering in a school. So it doesn't apply to students or school districts, just large gatherings as a whole.
Right. I went out of order last time, so I'm going to return the favor. I'll go with trustee Lazarus and then trustee Gainer.
Thank you. Quick question. I haven't been in a building in a while. And I know, Emile, you've been very busy. In this return to school plan, it says that we need to have hand sanitizers and all these different appropriate devices at different areas that we typically don't have that kind of stuff located. Plexiglass dividers, sneeze guards in specific areas, moving furniture around for the social distancing. Are we actually... This is for Phase 4. So are we actually doing this in all of our buildings right now, preparing and hoping and praying that we can, one day, go back to the hybrid model, at least? And when the numbers, the science tells us we're ready, will we be ready? Or will there be a long, like several weeks that we have to kind of prep? And are we just... Just so that we're not, like, I guess, spending money that we might not have to spend? But it sounds to me that we need to because this is our plan, so we've committed to this plan?
So I'll jump in first, if that's all right, trustee Lazarus, and then Mr. Lautzana can give the technical answer. He has prepared a beautiful presentation for you all on our work in exactly this area. We prioritize last week and tonight with what parents needed to know now. So trustees, I want you to know, he has it ready. I just have not communicated it with you. But we are making preparations. And Mr. Lautzana, if you want to give kind of the summary. And I would share with you all that I don't think really anyone, other than our team, knows about all this work. But we are diligently working and preparing. Up until the first of... Middle of June or the first of July, we were really scurrying to be able to go back. So he was well into this work. Go ahead, Mr. Lautzana, kind of give him the high notes of all the hand sanitizer stations and plexiglass shields and all the other fun stuff you're on.
That's... That's all, you know, that's some of it. There's the signage that was mentioned in Dave and Shante's presentations. There's enhancing the ventilation in our buildings to the maximum extent possible. Trustee Lazarus, you mentioned the furniture separation, the sneeze guards. All of this is in the works. One of the recommendations that recurred is designating in-only and out-only locations in your buildings. Queuing markings, we've all seen those in the grocery stores, you know? So if you do have a queue for whatever reason. How we're addressing drinking water. You know, the water fountains are a serious concern for the spread of virus. We've got all these, you know, typically all these little mouths on the drinking fountains. And obviously, that's not a safe condition in a pandemic. So there's a long list of these items that we're diligently working to accomplish. We don't foresee major supply chain issues now that we've moved the start date back. That was one of the things that kind of was keeping me up at night, was just the availability. Obviously, supplies are prioritized for medical facilities. And I'm not sure how Major League Baseball gets everything they get, but you know, they get ahead of us maybe sometimes. But we have a pretty good supply chain, so we're not concerned about that. There's a lot of details, there's a lot of moving parts. And you know, you're probably right. I mean, if there was a vaccine tomorrow and we're all magically vaccinated, would we have spent some money preparing for something we didn't need? You're probably right. But we're operating under the assumption that at some point, we will return to school in a partial occupancy mode that requires health protocols to be in place, and we're preparing for that.
I would just add that having hand sanitizer stations in more locations around the school district, having touchless water faucets, drinking fountains, that kind of thing. I don't think we're wasting our money doing that. I think those are things that we should have. And it helps with the hygiene and keeps all of us safer. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gainer.
Thank you. Given Governor Whitmer's order today to limit gatherings to 10 people or fewer, I thank trustee Nelson for bringing up the issue about this not applying to schools. Going back to the previous presentation about restrictions of staff in schools, there's been an issue of some teachers and perhaps other staff that don't have adequate internet connectivity. And the suggestion that perhaps they would be allowed in their classroom to connect to the school Wi-Fi system. Can either you or Dr. Swift address this?
Trustee Gainer, that's one of the items that we're considering as a part of our guidelines for fall. And there's no decision right now about that. I think part of it's connected to that if we were rolled back to 3, to a shelter status, then we wouldn't have that option. But in 4, we do. Mr. Combs, do you want to comment toward, is there guidance in the plan around? I know some districts are actually requiring teachers to teach from the classroom. We have not gone there yet. But we do know the internet availability is important for some folks.
Yes, there's no guidance in the plan, but we're considering all those options. And you're right, some districts are doing that.
Thank you. Trustee Lightfoot?
Thank you so much. I appreciate you touching on the nuances, Mr. Lautzana, and the work that the team is doing on the nuances of the planning. We have to balance purchasing with saving money for other things, too. Plan for PPEs, but make sure we have enough resources for what we're working on in other spaces, more to do with students still being at home. So it is truly a balancing act that we, on the backside, are always talking about behind these meetings, are in talks and conversations and expressing our concerns and thoughts and ideas with our team. And I just wanted to express that to the public. That's... Those are some, when you talk about those nuances. I'm fascinated by how many nuances it is to this work. And I wish there were a way we could share... I know you guys are busy doing the work, but there's so much of a story to be told of all of the work behind the scenes and all of the things that you just wouldn't think of. And the purchases that we're making. I'm interested, honestly, I've shared with Dr. Swift, just us constantly making sure that previous plans for spending, if there's room to revisit at any point some of that, so that money or resources are shifted to what we may find we need, that we may not even be aware of at this point. And so that balancing act, I can't speak enough to it. And I just want the public, again, to be as supportive as they have been about this new place and space that we are in. Building the plane while we fly it is just the perfect metaphor. And we're not... I don't think we can be as wedded to some of the things we had been as wedded to just a few months ago. We have to allow for that flexibility, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nelson.
As a follow-up to trustee Lazarus and trustee Lightfoot, which I really appreciated your questions and comments. To Mr. Lautzana, what fund does the money come from for these provisions within buildings to make them safe? You described examples of those.
And, you know, it falls into... We have three sources of revenue, if you will, that we can apply to these physical alterations to the building. There's the general fund, which is our salaries and maintenance fund. And that's a very precious fund that we try to minimally pull from. And then we have the generous support of our voters with both the sinking fund and a bond fund, which each have different parameters on the use of funds. The bond fund, generally speaking, is the most... Has the broadest set of uses. So some of these items, for instance, we're likely going to purchase some additional custodial equipment with our current vendor. The contract has... You know, the district owns most of the equipment. So the purchase of additional cleaning equipment could be through the bond funds, the recently approved bond funds, which is great. The disinfectant that goes into the equipment, however, is a general fund expense. And so we get this kind of dynamic where we can buy often the hardware, if you will, or if we're modifying plumbing fixtures to make them touchless, that could be either sinking fund or bond fund, the complete labor and installation of those. Other things that are disposable are not qualifiable generally to either the bond or the sinking fund. And then, of course, there's the CARES Act and potentially additional CARES funding, which I know Jill Minnick, our new assistant superintendent, is here somewhere. And she might be able to speak to how we're applying CARES Act funding. I'm not too involved in that. I think we're using that more for some of our staffing and other educational side of the house needs. But generally, some of the things, if it's a permanent or quasi-permanent item, we can generally use, we can use our sinking fund or bond fund. If it's a disposable item, like a disposable mask or a supply, like a cleaning solution, those need to come from the general fund. So unfortunately, we do need to pull from the general fund for some of our COVID response in our buildings.
I do want to jump in there while Ms. Minnick is coming on board to respond to this. It's an excellent question. We are still awaiting guidance on all of the details around the use of the CARES money. But I will point out to the trustees, I know you all are advocating, as am I, through all of our channels, for the next infusion of dollars. It is every intention that we have not to leverage general fund for the kinds of expenses that Mr. Lautzana has listed. And so we don't know those answers fully yet. But it is so important that we continue to lobby for that next iteration of funds. Ms. Minnick?
Good evening, Dr. Swift. Good evening, trustees. I appreciate Emile's comments around the precious I appreciate Emile's comments around the precious dollars that we have in the general fund and his mentioning of our generous taxpayers who voted for the renewal of our sinking fund and our bond. I want to add on to that regarding the CARES Act. Our district was fortunate to receive some CARES federal monies. And we have already identified the expenditures that we can attribute to that grant. We will be receiving additional CARES dollars. You may be familiar with the funding proposal that was announced just recently, whereby we will be losing, we will be having a reduction in our state aid dollars, but we will be having an increase in our CARES Act monies. So that will be funding available for these types of expenditures as well. But as Dr. Swift mentioned, we don't yet have written guidance on exactly which expenditures will be eligible. Most of these, I would anticipate, would follow the same guidance as the previous CARES Act, but that remains to be seen. We do have some additional funding from Senate Bill 690, which is twelve dollars and thirty-two cents per pupil, but it does provide for COVID-related expenditures to help cover costs for transitioning from in-person instruction this past spring to virtual instruction or other types of costs. And I will mention, too, that we are fortunate enough to have some remaining funds in our technology bond. And so we will be able to utilize those dollars for technology and devices and those kinds of things. And there are, as Mr. Lautzana mentioned, there are some expenditures that will simply have to come out of the general fund that cannot be funded in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I don't see any other, any other questions from trustees. I will say thank you to the team again. I think sometimes we'll get these presentations and you get a lot as you read between the lines. And I think, you know, for those who were concerned that we didn't have intentions on at some point when it is safe, going back to a hybrid situation, I think this is a demonstration of the thought that's being put into it and the thought that was put into that plan before we had to very quickly adjust. But we have the right team in place to make it, to make the pivot when it's, when we're ready as well. So thank you so much to the entire team.